Good morning. We'll call to order the Board of Franklin County Commissioners meeting for Wednesday, April 26th.
Commissioner Howard?
Present.
Vice Chair Renaud?
Present.
Chair Waymeyer?
Present.
Commissioner Oglesby?
Present.
Commissioner Dunn?
Present.
If you will please stand and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance, remain standing for the invocation led by Reverend Scott Dickinson of the Michigan Valley United Methodist Church.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Morning.
Morning.
Let's pray together. Lord, we thank you for this day. The scripture says this is the day the Lord has made. We can rejoice and be glad in it, and we can. And, Lord, we're thankful for those who look over our beautiful county and the things that are going on here. I thank you for our leaders and for those who are taking care of all the business of our county. Lord, we just lift them up and ask that you continue to help them make wise decisions and good decisions on things that are going on for us. Continue to pray for our county, for the people of our county, those who are hurting, those who are looking for work, for homes, those who are just hurting from family emergencies and things. Lord, we lift them up. We just ask that you be with them. We pray for our nation today. A lot of stuff going on. Sometimes people get worried about those kind of things. So just lift up our president and everybody all the way on down. And, Lord, ask again for wisdom and guidance and everything that's done. Lord, we thank you again for the beautiful place that we live, this beautiful county we call Franklin County. And, Lord, watch over us, keep us healthy and safe, and thank you for all you do for us. In Christ's name we pray it. Amen. All right, we have a number of people on the agenda today for correspondence and organizational business. Is there anything from the administrator's office? All right. First on the list is to receive an annual update from KDOT. Kristy Kelly, the Community Affairs Manager, I believe is here. If you want to come on down? Okay. Can you wing it or do you want us to wait for her? We can put her down at the bottom of the list.
Let's move them down and they're on their way.
We will do that. All right. We have USD 290 representatives here for an update.
Good morning. Thank you for your time today. We wanted to take a few minutes to talk about a couple of things. First, we want to talk about our progress towards our vision. About four years ago... I'm gonna turn on the power. Oh, look at that. And I think I went twice. Okay. So about four years ago, I sat down with our board and we went through a process of defining a vision for USD 290. And the vision is that all our students graduate from Ottawa High School college and career ready. And they've defined that to be have the knowledge, skills, and behaviors to hold life-sustaining employment. And when we say life-sustaining employment, we don't mean barely life-sustaining. Life-sustaining employment means that our students will be able to take care of their families, themselves and their families, and work their way out of poverty. And so that's the vision. And part of this has to do with post-secondary achievement and so on. And so just this past year, Dr. Watson, our State Commissioner on Education and the State Board of Education, defined five areas that we will work on as a state. And today, we're just going to talk about the post-secondary completion and attendance because all of them have to do with our vision. But this one, we just got new data on Monday, and this particular goal for the state of Kansas has been our goal for the last four years. And so we want to talk about that one in particular. We know that in Kansas, that 71% of workers will need something post-secondary. It could be military. It could be a certificate from a technical school, a college degree, and associate's degree. But in order to be successful as a state, as a county, and as a city, we know that we need to have 71% of our students go on to do something beyond just a high school diploma. And so you can see on this slide, 36% will need a bachelor's degree or higher. And that's remarkable because we often think that all of our kids need to go off to college. But we need great plumbers and we need great electricians and roofers and welders and so on, very important professions. And then 35% will need those associate's degrees and those kinds of certifications. And so that's what we're working towards. And what you see here at the top is the district vision, which I mentioned a minute ago, that we want our kids to be able to hold life-sustaining employment. And so as a district, we've worked with our principals and with teachers to define what does that mean for us. We can say what our goal is, we can say what our vision is, but unless we have steps to move towards that vision and the goals, then we don't really know where we're going. And so this triangle, which I apologize is difficult to see, really defines what we are as a district. On the very bottom, the base, the foundation of our district is about relationships, the culture of our district, communication, being part of the community. And then it builds on up to the very pinnacle, which is student engagement, learning, and instruction. That's really the pinnacle that's going to get us to all of our kids being able to hold life-sustaining employment. And so just this past week, the State Department came out with some post-secondary data that tells us how we're doing. Before this time, we were not able to really look at our kids four and five and six years out. We had a hunch what our kids were doing, and we want them to come back to Ottawa. We want them to come back to Franklin County if they leave to get education in other places. But we really couldn't collect data on where they went and what they did. And so on Monday, the State Department released some data that Dr. Cops will share with you with regards to where our kids go from Ottawa High School once they leave us, when they graduate.
Part of this is showing you the shift and change in accountability of schools and how they measure schools. And what we've seen prior to the new Kansas CAN model was that everything was really based upon state assessments. And so when you look across here, you see that the yellow bar is the number of students who were enrolled in post-secondary educational institutions. But you also notice that in 2011, the year that we had the lowest number of students enrolling in post-secondary institutions, we have the highest percentage of students across the state who scored proficient on state assessments. So the point is that even though we saw state assessment scores increasing, we were seeing a decrease in post-secondary enrollment, which means there was not a correlation to students doing well on state assessments, students having success and enrolling in post-secondary institutions. The other piece that you see is this red bar that goes along here, and this is about post-secondary remediation. So we also saw that a 1% drop, and really it's pretty steady across there. But even when we saw the year with the highest number of students, 92% in 2011, the highest number of students scoring well on state assessments, we still saw about the same number of students that were needing remediation in post-secondary institutions. Typically, those were math programs and ELA programs. So one of the things, and we see it with Neosho County, especially with our dual credit courses here, in order for a student to enroll in any of those courses, they have to take what Neosho County calls as a compass exam. And ultimately, it determines whether or not they have the skill set in order to be successful in that class. If they do not, then in terms of algebra, they take intermediate algebra or beginning algebra before they can get to college algebra and so on and so forth. So again, what we're talking about here is the lack of correlation between what we're seeing on state assessments and true success in post-secondary institutions as we go. This data is about Ottawa USD 290 specifically. And what you can see here is over the course of a five-year cohort of students, graduation rates. So each of these yellow bars is the percentage of students that graduated from Ottawa High School in USD 290. And you can see that we reached the bottom in 2011, the year that we saw highest rates of state assessments across the state of Kansas. We see our least number of graduates. And then we have a fairly significant increase up to 2014, where we reached almost 86% of our students graduating from high school. The next piece of this then is, and you look, this is 2010 data. We have the rest of the data. 2010 was what they released first. So in 2010, we saw 74% of our students graduate. Of those 74%, and this is only of the students who went to post-secondary institutions, of that 74%, this is 100% of the 74%. So these are only our high school graduates. Within that, you see that you have just under 61%, 60.6% of those students that enrolled in post-secondary institutions. When you think about this in terms of what the state is saying that we need in order to be successful, 71% of our students enrolling in those institutions? We're well behind that. And when you look at the final number, six years down the road, just under 35% of our students are actually graduating with some type of certificate or a degree. We sit, USD 290 sits right in the middle of the state. We're not doing great, we're not doing awful, we're right in the middle, we're almost exactly in the middle. So there's some normalcy to the data that you see across the state of Kansas. But certainly, this provides us some insight as to how we begin to move forward. When you look at standards in the state of Kansas right now, they're talking about college and career readiness standards, not college or career readiness standards. And what we're seeing here is this push now that in order for our students to be career-ready, there's a piece of them that also has to be college-ready because in order for them to take on those roles in the state of Kansas over the course of the next five years, they're going to have to be able to obtain some type of post-secondary education in order to receive those certificates. It doesn't necessarily have to be bachelor's programs, but there's going to be some specific skill training that is going to be necessary. So as you look across this data, and we'll explain it here, this blue bar is the number of those 74%. It's the percentage of those 74% of kids that did not choose to go to a post-secondary institution. So total of all of our graduates, just under 61% go to college, just under 40% choose not to. This orange bar right here that goes across and diminishes as you go along is the number of students who stay in college. Right? So the second year of our 60% that went, 51% of that 60% or 51% of the total were still there, right? The other 7.1% went for the first time, and 1.5% finished. This yellow bar right here means that we have just under 8% who stopped. They quit. So as we go along, we retain at a pretty high level through the first two years, and then we have a pretty significant drop into year three and four. Certainly, we know that when we don't see, we don't see a huge gain here, but we do see a fairly significant increase here, that a number of, that a big piece of this change here is because we have a number of students finishing, which is a good piece of information to have. The other part that we see is this blue line right here that increases as we go through. This, these students are from this yellow bunch that came back to school, right? So of this 7.9% that we had here, 0.8% of them came back. Of this 18.1%, just under 4% came back. So we know we had students leave, come back for whatever reasons that we had. Okay? So really, the way that we look at this data is in terms of if we're looking at developing a workforce that has to have specific skill sets, and we know that we need 71% of our students to have some type of post-secondary institution or post-secondary education and a certificate to go along that explains their specific skill set, then certainly, we have to provide different options for our students in our schools now. And part of that is the next step for us in developing programs and making sure that we have the right things, the right options for kids, that we are not a school in a district that is narrowly focused in terms of we gotta have all of our kids meet Regents' requirements for four-year institutional, for entrance and admission. That we can start talking about really focusing our kids on what is it that you want to do? The individual plans of study that we've been working on for several years now have a focus. Before, it was just one more step, and there was no reason for us to really work with the accountability piece of the individual plans of study because there was no focus on how those items pertain to how students would move out of secondary institutions, right? Now that we have it, we can really start taking a look at, for instance, if Colton is back at OHS these days, we can start working with Colton about what his career path is. What is it that you want to do? If you're post-secondary institution-minded and you're ready for a four-year bachelor's degree, then let's look at the courses that you need to take in order to reach those goals. If we're not, if I want to become a welder, and we know that we can provide that certificate for you before you ever leave high school, your path can look like this. It's not about tracking students, but it's really about providing students an opportunity to understand what their interests are, the job opportunities that are available within that wage, whether it's high-demand, high-wage positions, and how can we get kids into those positions so that we have better opportunities for them to succeed once they walk out of our doors? This is the new accountability for schools, and it's the first time that we've really been able to see a true growth model. What is it that we can do to help our students be successful in something that is going to provide real-world application to them and not an assessment given to them at the 10th grade year, the 8th grade year, the 7th grade year, so on and so forth? We do know that in our community, we have some influences that factor that, and we'll talk about those a little bit. The first and foremost is our rate of poverty. We have just over 50% of our students that currently attend our schools that are on free and reduced lunches. Ultimately, that generational poverty that we have time and time again with family after family after family has an impact upon their education. We see it with a number of those things, including absenteeism and mobility, right? Our transient population is huge, and we're moving from community to community at times based upon which family member can we live with today? And so all of these things have an impact upon what we can provide for our kids and how we best educate our kids, and certainly, the learning gap that they have as they move from school to school and from class to class. The other pieces, we continue to see an increasing number of ELL students, students that are non-English speaking, and the difficulties that provides when we're really looking at providing structures and supports and so on and so forth for them. The number of students that we have with disabilities, and again, providing the supports, and certainly, the percentage of new teachers. We do not have a great deal of turnover here within our community, but we do have turnover every year. And every time we see a new teacher that we have to go through and learn the system with, and they're beginning to understand how to best engage students, how to best manage students, how to build relationships with students, and certainly, we see a gap between what we're able to do with those and what we're able to do with our more experienced teachers. Okay? So we have a plan, one, and we've begun to see this, and you guys are a part of this, but certainly, sharing this dialogue with our Curriculum Advisory Committee, making sure that our curriculum is sound and that it is aligned to the processes that we want to make sure that we adhere to so that we can ensure the success of our students as we move forward. The conversation with our administrative team, back to this idea here, has been ongoing, making sure that the piece that our teachers can affect is really right here, that they have an impact upon our curriculum, they have an impact upon our programming, they have an impact upon the rigor that we expect of our students, they have an impact upon how students behave in their classroom, they have an impact upon subject mastery and what the expectations of our students are in terms of skills that they learn within the classroom. Those things really build upon these things down here at the bottom. When we have great relationships with students, we do these things better. When we have a climate and culture of success in our building, we do these things better. When we communicate with parents and we make sure that everybody understands what our roles are, we do these things better. And when we do all of these things, ultimately, we get to the pinnacle, which is me. We have high student engagement, we have students that have success, and we graduate every student from Ottawa High School. So that's been a lot of our work with administrators at this point, certainly with the Board of Education as well as sharing with the community as part of the reason why we're here today. And we have a great deal of work to be done as we return to school in August to make sure that we're prepared to move forward with this process. Last thing we'll talk about is Bond Project, and this is maybe the biggest thing that's happened to USD 290 in quite some time in terms of really getting people to see the facilities that we have and understand that we have five incredible schools in our district. And the first is Sunflower, and we are about 40 days from the completion of Sunflower for opening in August. They just put up the playground yesterday, so that was up, and you can kind of see the footprint. And if you look really closely, you can see that they've started pouring asphalt along here. There's a lot of things that are beginning to happen, and this school is about ready to open up. It is an incredible school, and at some point in time, we'll take everybody on a tour of the inside, but it is phenomenal. The classroom spaces are huge, provide every amenity that you could expect for students to have great success in this building. And the best part of it is that the equity between the three of our elementary schools is really pretty sound at this point. There will not be one that is significantly better than the other. They will all provide great opportunities for kids.
The whole purpose behind the whole Bond Project and the addition of these spaces had to do with our vision. We have to have the right spaces to give kids the right education, and so they are not separate in any way. The Bond Project is in line exactly with our vision for the future.
Next one is the high school, and if you've driven past it, you've seen the incredible progress that they've made there. This space right here is the admin wing, this space right here is the science wing. And so as you look across what we've got going on right, this is before they started either of these. So right now, this science wing extends out like this space, and the admin wing extends out from here. What you will see in the coming future is that they will begin construction on this area down here for the new current tech ed center, which will be a huge addition to our community and what we can provide for our students. And you will also see the beginning of the construction of the performing arts center, which we're really excited about going in on this side. Science wing has six huge classrooms, 1,800 square-foot classrooms that have both a learning space as well as a lab space in them. And in the middle, I think, a 3,500 square-foot space for large experimental projects and group settings for all of our science classes to come back together. And the admin space will certainly provide a more inviting area for our people to come into, certainly a more secure area for our people to come into. Ultimately, again, the spaces that we'll have in our high school for our kids will be really second to none on the eastern side of this state. Be a great facility for our kids. Questions you have for us?
Fantastic presentation.
Looks like to me, two-thirds of the kids are pretty much have everything together. They're going to graduate and have a career course and that sort of thing. And you're trying to address the third, that might need a little help and a little more direction. I see you're doing a lot of work with the community college and that sort of thing to get them other opportunities to look at different possible career paths other than college. I think that's great.
A big piece of this vision was C3 project that we have with Neosho County. And ultimately, what that is, a year ago, we really worked hard at developing a program that diminishes the gap between the students who can and the students who cannot. And what we know in our community is that the students who have money to pay for classes at Neosho County have done so. And the students that do not, because there are no grant funding and there are no scholarships funding, if you cannot pay out-of-pocket for those courses, you just don't take them. I went through way too many enrollment sessions to watch parents come through with their kids and say, "We can afford one, but Mom or Dad, I want to take three. We can't do it. Sorry. Pick the one that you want, and let's go for it." And some others don't even bother, right? "We can't afford it, so we're just not going down that road." And ultimately, we widen the gap of the students who can and the students who cannot. The C3 initiative in our partnership with Neosho County was really about narrowing the gap for them and being able to say, "We'll take on some of those costs. We want every student to have the opportunity to take college courses." And ultimately, what we did was set up a program that any student at Ottawa High School can go through and obtain an associate's degree, all 64 credit hours while enrolled at Ottawa High School. They can earn an associate's degree without ever stepping foot into a post-secondary institution past their graduation date at OHS. In doing so, we knew that if we were going to do that, we couldn't tell them that it was going to cost them $300 a credit hour. So we set something up where we have a contract with Neosho County to pay a certain amount of money. But what that means for our students is that they have open enrollment to any classes that we teach in a dual-credit capacity. We charge them $20 per credit hour, so basically, $60 a class. The point of that is that they have to have some accountability in this. There's some ownership that this is just not there. Any student who comes to us and says, "We can't," we found a way for them to do it. This is, again, it's not about setting boundaries, it's about there's some piece of accountability in taking college courses. We saw the numbers increase last year from 70 students enrolling in dual-credit courses to first semester this year, 170 students enrolling in dual-credit courses. It's a huge piece, again, of that vision that we get back to of the number of students that have certificates and are able to go on to the job market in the state of Kansas. We just increased it by 100 students in one semester. So we're excited about that piece of what we're doing and certainly narrowing that gap for our students to have the ability to have high-wage, high-demand positions when they graduate from Ottawa High School.
School readiness obviously is a big one when you look at your poverty level. So your kids that are coming to school are going to have a big gap in where they're starting from. You can't start a race, somebody have a big head start and finish the line at the same time. So in your three elementaries then, what type of ways are you addressing the preschoolers? And I assume the state's still not funding kindergarten full-time, so...
Thank you for that question. Part of the new proposed finance formula will provide foundational aid for full-day kindergarten, and that's fantastic. Another part of that is that there will be additional funding for four-year-olds at risk. We've taken that on as a district to have preschools in each of our buildings. Because of our space at Garfield, we'll have two preschools at Sunflower, and we'll be able to add additional students. We have parents as teachers, and we have a number of programs, Tiny Kid and all of those things. But we still need to beef that up because we still get kids who come to kindergarten who lose language and vocabulary. Those are still to be identified, what we would expect. And we always say, "It's not about kids being ready for kindergarten, it's about us being ready for kids." And so there has to be a balance in making sure that we provide enough pre-kindergarten things so that when they get to kindergarten, they're on the same page as they have at kindergarten.
The other part of this is that we know that there are institutions within our community that are not tied to USD 290 that provide some of those supports. We want to make sure, and part of what our special ed director is doing now is reaching out to those preschool programs, whether it be Apple Garden or Westminster or whatever it happens to be, and helping them align with our pre-K standards and providing them the opportunity to say, "Look, we want to open up our doors to you in terms of professional development, making sure that the resources that we have are available to you so that what students are getting at each of the preschool programs throughout our community has some consistency, and we can make sure that there are certain things that every kid is getting before they begin with us in kindergarten." Some of those institutions don't have the resources to really make sure that we can work together and align that way. And we want to make sure that we reach out to them and say, "Look, we'll provide your professional development to staff. We'll provide some of the resources if we can and make sure that what we're providing for kids in those settings is going to ensure their preparedness for kindergarten and do everything we can to ensure their preparedness for kindergarten as they come through."
This is not really a question for you, but it's kind of, I guess it's a wide-open question. I wonder if there are any companies in Franklin County that are large enough or that provide daycare for their staff? Are you aware of any of those that do that?
We're not, but this is certainly a conversation that's taking place with FCDC right now. Just to mention, one, ATC Truck Cover has brought this up about whether or not we can do it, and it spawned a completely different conversation that has come on with the schools and RMH about whether or not we can provide health care to some of our families who don't have it. So that question led to a number of different questions and ultimately, a completely different conversation that's taking place with the Franklin County Development Council. Part of that is about making sure that our workforce can go to work every day. And when your kids are sick at home and daycare won't take them or you can't find daycare, we have people that are not going to work. If we can create the balance between schools, employers, daycare, and health care, then ultimately, every one of those entities has a benefit in that process.
Well, I'm sitting here thinking, pointing my finger back at ourselves. Franklin County is one of the larger employees in the county. And you know where we at in offering that type of thing or making sure that we have some way to help these families provide for that, a meaningful environment, something that, like you say, it has some connections to, hey, what are they going to be needing when they get to kindergarten? Because if you get behind the eight ball... Because if you get behind the eight ball, when you start school, the odds of catching up and making it to that, one of those percentages that graduate is just stacked against you enormously.
I'm, uh, my question is, you, you stated that over fifty percent are free and reduced meals. And we, we learned yesterday, or it was stated, three point nine percent unemployment. So we have relatively no unemployment for those who want a job. Where's the, where's the difference at?
It goes exactly back to when we talk about self, self-sustaining employment. Because, you know, and, and we all have positions in, in our different organizations that, that don't pay that living wage for a number of reasons, they're hard time and so on. But what we find is that we have a parent or a single dad or a single mom who struggle themselves to have life-sustaining employment. And so they, they meet the poverty level and qualify for free and reduced lunch. And so it isn't, it, the unemployment rate is critically important, as you mentioned. But it's also about the life-sustaining employment. Because you can have a job that's an entry-level job at a fast food place or wherever that is, including in our own district. But that's not necessarily life-sustaining. So when we say life-sustaining, that means that you can, whatever your family is, you can take care of that family and yourself with that job.
That goes back to the, uh, the daycare thing because you cannot afford to go to work and pay daycare if you have two kids or more. It's just too expensive. You have to be making a big bucks to, to make that balance. So you're back to one income right off the bat and that income, like you say, may not be that, that high.
The, the other part of that is our community has a number of single-parent families. And when you have two or three kids with a single income, certainly impacts where you fall within that, than that range. The other part is that we have a number of, of our students who are living with grandparents. So when you look at it in terms of, of, um, of the, the jobs that are out there and our unemployment rating, a number of our grandparents have hit retirement age. They have a fixed income. We've got two or three kids that are living with grandparents in one household on a fixed income. And certainly that impacts what we're able to do. So there are a lot of different items that, that impact what that, what that number and value is. Certainly what we know is that the more students that we have that are, that are on free and reduced lunches, the, the data would support that we have to provide more supports for them in order to be successful. Certainly not every one of them, I don't want to pigeonhole people. But the, the data would suggest that if, if the more people that we have on, on free and reduced lunches, the more supports that we're going to have to have in place in order for all of our students to be successful.
As it relates to, to us as this board, that's why I think it's important that we're trying to attract those type of businesses to Franklin County that do pay a better wage and can provide for their family and be able to take care of them and, and come out of that cycle of poverty.
Yep, absolutely.
Glad to see general, uh, generational poverty is something you're, you're working to as part of your, uh, your overall goal. Education, we know is the one thing. It's kind of the silver bullet that can, that can help crime, public health, overall quality of life, property value even. It's just, uh, it's the, it's the one thing that, that can do all those, but it takes generations and it's difficult to measure. But you can't measure the fact that if somebody's father and grandfather and however far back never really held a job or managed to wake himself up to go to work, that the child won't learn that. And it's almost guaranteed that they won't. But till somebody intervenes at some points and teaches them those skills, they're, they won't be able to have that sustaining quality of life, so.
Any other questions?
Just got one question. Uh, looks like a different color brick from the old high school, the, the new construction. What's the process there?
Yes. Last year, when we were looking at different models, DLR, our architect originally tried to match. And it's just about impossible to match. I mean, you can't weather brick. Um, and so as we looked at different renditions, we determined that, that overall, when it's, when it's all finished, that black brick was more significant and had a better look to it than trying to match the old brick. And you can see, if you go around to the sides, that they've tried to match the brick and that's about the best we can do. It still doesn't match. Those areas will be covered. So the front of the administration building and the performing arts center will have that black brick. It's kind of grayish now, but once it's cleaned significantly, it will be renewed. And, and so will the Career Tech Ed Center.
As well as performing arts.
Yep.
I get that question a lot, don't you?
Yeah, we get it a lot. The reality of it is, is that we want to make it pop, right? We, I mean, that high school is going to be fantastic and, and, and it's going to look pretty awesome. And, and it needed a facelift. And, and part of this is, is about doing that and making sure that people drive by and notice that, that our community supports that, that high school and all of our schools. And, and we have something that we can be really proud of in, in terms of our facilities for our students.
All right. Well, thank you.
Thank you. We appreciate your time.
All right, we have a presentation from David Arterberry with George K. Baum and company regarding the financing plan for the industrial park.
Good morning. I've got a hand here to go on. It's, it's a pleasure to be here this morning. As was mentioned, what I'm here to talk a little bit about is an upcoming bond issue to fund the cost of the road improvements at the Rock Creek Industrial Park. If you recall, the county issued some temporary notes late last year to fund some of the design costs of it. This bond issue is a bigger bond issue that will both pay those notes off and provide a lot of the funds needed to, to actually construct the roads. And just to let you know, the city of Ottawa sold last month bonds to fund a portion of their cost of the utilities that they're going to be extending out to, to the industrial park. What I wanted to do really, you don't have any action to take related to the bond issue today. I just sort of wanted to kind of go through the schedule of events that we'll be undertaking over the next couple of months related to the bond issue. And then talk to you a little bit about the, the financing plan. And this is something I presented to the commission early last year, but, so this is just sort of an update of that. My goal really is just to make sure that you, you kind of understand the process we're going to go through, that you're comfortable with it and that you get any questions answered. The first thing on this handout, there's two pages, two sides to the handout. If you turn to the one that's the calendar of events, I just sort of wanted to go over our, our schedule with you. And as far as issuing bonds goes, there's really three steps that a governing body of a municipality has to, to go through to, to issue, to get the bonds authorized and issued. And I've highlighted those steps on this calendar in bold. You'll see the first step is today, April twenty-sixth, just review the financing plan. That's what I'm here to do today. After that, we'll spend the next few weeks drafting up the initial offering documents. Legal counsel will be drafting up some of the, the associated legal documents. And then we'll plan on returning to the commission on May seventeenth. You'll see there, county passes sale resolution. This is the resolution where you officially authorize a, a sale of bonds to be conducted. The sale doesn't occur then, it's just what we call a go-to-market resolution would be adopted on that day. After that, then the next few weeks, we'll spend getting ready for the sale, getting the prospectus, the offering document distributed, sending out the proper notifications to potential bidders on it. And then on June twenty-first, according to our schedule, we'll actually conduct the bond sale. We'll take bids. Our original plan was to take them early in the morning on the twenty-first and then present them to the commission later in the morning at your meeting. We've actually had some talk about maybe actually taking the bids the day before, opening them, verifying them and then presenting them to you, you know, first thing in the morning on the twenty-first. We're kind of still working out the, the details on that. After the bids, bid opening occurs, then there'll be a bond resolution presented to the board that officially issues the bonds, locks in the interest rates of the best bid, prescribes all the form and details. And that's really the final official step that would need to occur with, with the commission. And then if, a few closing arrangements occur. And then finally, according to this schedule, on July sixth, then the bond proceeds would be delivered to the county and be available to, you know, pay for construction costs, pay the notes off, to reimburse yourself for any other costs you might have related to the project. So that's sort of the calendar that we put together. And obviously, these dates can change, but hopefully this is the schedule that we'll be, we'll be sticking to. On the flip side of the page, you'll see a bunch of numbers and a graph. Let me point your attention to the graph down below because this is really where all the numbers up above flow into. On this graph, what this graph attempts to do is to show the county's existing and future bond payments that it's due, that are due in coming years, both for your current debt, your GO bonds that are outstanding and your public building commission bonds that are outstanding, as well as the, the future debt for the Rock Creek project. The blue, the, the two blue portions of the graph down below, the darker blue represents your existing general obligation bond payments and the light blue graph represents your existing public building commission payments. And you can see there, right now, those two payment obligations together, if you look over on the left side of the graph, combined for a mill, about a little over four mils. The two green graphs represent the future debt for Rock Creek. And you might ask, well, why do we have two issues here? There's a couple of reasons we think it would be best to have two issues. First of all, our thought was that the county doesn't yet know the final cost of the project. We could right now go out and issue bonds for an estimated amount that you think the project's going to cost, but we don't know if that's going to be an exact number. So if we, we'd issue bonds now and not have an exactly correct number for the amount of the project cost, we could face a situation where you're short money if the project costs come in a little more than expected. Or we could come into a situation where the bond proceeds are more than you need. So rather than risk a shortfall or having an overage, we thought it would be best to do one bond issue now to provide the majority of funds that you need. But then do a follow-up issue early next year to provide all of the remaining funds that you need. Because hopefully by then, you'll have a good idea of what the final project cost was. The other reason, though, it makes sense to issue two bonds has to do with some features of the federal tax code. If you're selling, if the county is selling ten million dollars or less of tax-exempt bonds in any one year, those bonds can be designated as bank-qualified, which is a designation in the federal tax code that makes those bonds very attractive to be purchased by, by banks. In fact, it makes the bonds so attractive by banks, to be bought by banks, that the banks are willing to accept a lower interest rate than bonds that are not bank-qualified. Right now, that difference in interest rates between bank-qualified bonds and non-bank-qualified bonds is about three tenths of a percentage point. On ten million dollars, three tenths of a percentage point over a twenty-year period of time is probably somewhere around six hundred thousand dollars or so. So if we can split the issue apart and do a bond issue this year of ten million dollars or less and a bond issue next year for, let's say, two to three million dollars, sort of the completion bond, both of those can be designated as bank-qualified and end up hopefully resulting in a lower overall borrowing cost at the county. So there's a couple of reasons we, we wanted to have two issues here instead of just this one. And I, I've met previously with, with Cole and with Derek and with Janet and we kind of went over all this. And that, the consensus was that's a, a good approach to take. Obviously, you know, if you have other thoughts, please, please mention them. The other thing I, I would like to point out about this graph is you'll notice that the, the green portions of the graph, the payments on the two new bond issues are lower in the early years. And then as the existing general obligation and public building commission bonds, as their payments drop off in future years, the payments on these new bonds will increase. The, the, the goal there was to try to create overall level payments in the future for the county that are equal. We call this a wraparound solution. And that's what we've done here is to create an overall equal payment structure. You'll notice though, you know, overall, the payments when you add these new bonds are on, are, you know, a little over a mil, about one point two mils or so higher than your existing debt payments. You know, it's, it's hard to add on what might be twelve or thirteen million dollars without a tax increase, but this hopefully minimizes the, the increase, so. That's kind of a, I know, quick overview there. And again, you know, we've met and talked a little bit about this and, so this isn't something entirely new. But I just wanted to make sure you understood it and make sure you get any questions answered before we start going down the road.
Questions? Anyone? Well, thank you. Thanks for coming down. Your time.
All right, thank you.
Go back up to receiving an annual update from KDOT.
First of all, I need to apologize to you for being late. There was a crash on one sixty-nine. So they kind of, the EMS was there, the fire department, and they kind of guided us on some, some, some county roads. With all the rain we've had, it's been rather interesting because I thought sure some of the semis that were ahead of us might be blocking that road too, the way they were slipping and sliding around. So to make up for that, a friend of mine told me that if you show up late, leave early. So I will try to show up late and leave early on you. Good morning. My name is Wayne Goodmanson. I'm the district engineer with, with the transportation department, county department of transportation. I'm Ada Shanute. With me is Kristy Kelly. She's the community affairs manager and your point of contact, Donna Schmidt. She's the area engineer at Garnet. So if you have any problems or issues, she's the first one you need to go to or should go to. With that, uh, I got this wild idea probably last year sometime. My daughter lives or used to live in Owasso, Oklahoma. And Garth Brooks at one time lived down there and then he moved off. But Garth went on a worldwide tour this year and then I was reading the Tulsa World because my kid does live down there. And it said Kiss was going on a world tour too. So I thought, you know what? If those guys go on world tours, I'll start a district engineer seventeen county tour. So that was what implemented me to, to do this stuff. So what I'm here mostly for is to hear concerns and issues that you might have for me. Just tell you right up front, I have no money, but other than that, I'm here to help you as much as I can.
I hope, I hope you're kidding about not having any money because it seems to be where the state gets most of their money out of KDOT, right?
I'm not touching that one with a ten-foot pole. But, but I do have good news. Your allotments have not been altered yet at this time. The, the city and counties will continue to get what your portion of the incoming stream is. So rest assured for the time being that, that you still have money coming into your coffers. Being as I have good people taking care of me, I was just handed this. This is kind of a guide Kristy put together on funding mechanisms that are available for different things. I heard you talking about the, uh, the industrial park you were talking, I think I was on a meeting on that at one point in time. Is Bartlett and West the engineer on that? Yeah, and so I don't know, maybe, maybe there might be some economic development money that might be available as a chance to try to get. And, and that's the only thing that really came to my mind about that. Because if I remember, the development's not right off fifty-nine, is it? It's off over on the side somewhere. That's what I thought. So I mean, I don't have anything on fifty-nine for you. But, so maybe... you can kinda look in there and see where we're at, like on 68 West of Town, the bridge that Corratt's building, the percent completes and stuff like that.
Is there any large projects in our area coming up? I know right now you've got, doing 31 in Anderson County and I understand there's some work on 68 coming in Miami County?
From Nevada Terrace, east to K-33 will be happening this summer. And then it's only a mile on you, but from 33 on over to 169 will be happening too, but most of that's in Miami County.
We have some 35 stuff coming up.
I-35's being patched, patching right now. Yeah, maybe, maybe they haven't gotten to Franklin County yet, but that will extend up to Eisenhower for sure, and then there's a few isolated spots.
And Donna's crew submitted a, a document to me that I'll send on up to Topeka, in fact, I think I have already, requesting to, to do pavement markings on 35 through the areas, so, and I think that will be...
They just redid the pavement marking on 35 from 59 north. They did it last fall and it peeled off, so they did it again this spring. They did it a lot quicker the second time. Interesting.
Practice, practice makes perfect.
And then there'll be sign replacements on I-35 as well. Signs up to the need to reflect.
Rock Creek Road and 59, I believe was kind of a rough intersection between, once it got past our road into the state right of way. Has anything been done with that in the last, I guess between fall and now? Is it still?
We patched it.
We did? I know that was somewhere right along, right between us and them, but...
Yeah, it's on, it's on the...
So, uh...
Patching on 15 under 35.
Yeah.
That was getting rough.
We all are named for local maintenance, working on that hole. Never goes away.
Is the Kingman Bridge over I-35, so that'd be just north of where the industrial park would potentially be, is it?
Montana.
Montana, yeah, Kingman's east-west. Is that on, uh, scheduled to be replaced or what's the plans with that?
Utilities are, have been, or are being located. They will be out there doing the water line soon, and I can't remember if that one...
I was thinking that was a delayed project.
That's what I was thinking too.
It was in the December letting and it was pulled. A number...
It's not, there's not money for funding, funding for the construction yet. Right of ways acquired and utilities are being located, so...
I'm going from memory now, but I believe it was 67 or 68% of the District 4 T-Works projects, which were in the latter part of the T-Works program, about 67% of them have been delayed. So, I mean, we're, we're all feeling the effect. Again, I'll just kinda finish up, get out of here quickly, but if there's anything you need, give us a holler.
Okay, 68 going east, 4 lane, is that just totally off the charge for a long time?
Well, I'm the new kid on the block, I've been around three, four years now, but ever since I've been here, it's only been a vision, the way I understand it. And in T-Works, they did the concept study and that and the design, if I remember correctly. But as far as construction dollars go for it, it's a dream. I mean, it's, as I'm remembering, 40 or 50 million dollar project, I was thinking, so...
And they're looking at the section in Miami County, from 169 to 69.
Well, maybe in another, another road program, I mean...
Is that from Payola exit to going east then to Lewisburg?
Yeah.
They split it up into three separate projects. The first one is to put in turn lanes at Somerset and some credit roads there, make that intersection work smoother. And then they pulled out $10 million to do a mile each end of that, make it 4 lane going into the, to the 169 and 69. So if, when it does get constructed, it'll probably get constructed in those phases still before they do the whole eight mile stretch.
And those jobs also were delayed.
Any other questions? Well, thank you.
Thanks a lot, appreciate you coming.
Answer questions.
Even if I'm late.
Sure, you can have it because I get it on the evening.
I think...
Oh, you already did, okay.
Have a great afternoon, thank you.
Thank you. That brings us to public comment. The policy regarding public comment states that a citizen desiring to speak on item not on the agenda may do so at this time. Discussion is limited to five minutes. The commission will not take action or discuss items at this time. Discussion should be limited to matters of county commission business and public comment is not permitted in regards to personnel matters or on pending legal matters. Items introduced under public comment may become agenda items at a later date.
Gene?
Good morning. Gene Hurt, 107, is this thing on? Last week on Wednesday here, I saw something done that I'd not seen for the 12 years that I've been active in this county and come into meetings. When Janet brought up the issue to, for you guys to explain, to go over your, your thoughts on the budget. Because that's never been done in here. Now, I thought it was good that it was, because I got to hear what ones wanted to talk about that, talked. And so, and the one item that I'm, I'm really fond of discussing at this time too, is public transportation. You know, first of all, I have to say to Commissioner Howard and to Commissioner Renault, thank you for what you were trying to do for public transportation. Okay? Your thoughts about the money. Now, the other three, I, I don't understand. You know, I know Roy, you've been on there for many, many years, how important public transportation is to this town and this county. You know, here recently, in the last, this last year, they've had people die that they deliver. Yes. And how can you justify, they only get $7.25 an hour, when people over there in Osage that I talked to yesterday, 11.50 an hour? Why? Because they feel that's important for those communities to have that service. Because if it wouldn't been for them, I wouldn't be standing here today, I'd probably be in a wheelchair. So, and then to hear a comment from one of the commissioners up here about worried about gasoline. You know, to me, Mr. Waymire, when you talk about that, to human life, you know, it's not a comparison at all, as far as I'm concerned. Human life is more important than gasoline. Now, you, you'd be puzzled by that, but I heard clearly. And to me, the people in this town, just like other places, don't have a whole lot of money, a lot of them don't have reasonable comm, uh, public comm, uh, communication to the hospitals and they have to rely on these people, go to the doctors and all their other appointments. And see, the other worst thing about it is, the city of this town of Ottawa don't even give them any money at all. And that's another thing that's disappointing too as well. But, but again, I say thank you to Mr. Howard and Mr. Renault. With the others, I don't understand you at all, what they do for this, this town. Because some people just, just look at that time and time again, you don't give them anything. Only $860 is all you're giving them. How can you expect for them to survive with everything else going on? I don't understand it. I'll keep saying it as long as I live, for what this program does for this town and this county. Thank you.
Lester Wertz?
I'm a treasurer for just about everything down in Richmond, Kansas, except the city of Richmond. I live outside the city. But I'm the treasurer for the fire board and we had a meeting last spring, or last winter about possibly going to UHF radios for various, I'll just say, public responding agencies. And of course, the fire department's gotta be able to talk to the sheriff and different folks when things happen. And we just had a fire board meeting last night and, or two nights ago, and they responded to the accident, I think there was a fatality down south of town here, a ways. And they said, well, I know that we haven't gotten to the point of buying the UHF radios yet. And I'm here to say that I would encourage us to go to HF radios, the 800 megahertz rather than UHF, because they're just a whole lot better. And if we don't, in about four or five years, we're gonna have to go to the 800 megahertz anyway. Is my understanding. For police departments and ambulance and all kinds of folks. And being a tightwad at heart, I would, I'd just as soon buy the 800 megahertz right from the start. That's my only comment. The issue's gonna come to you guys somehow through the process and you have one vote for the 800 megahertz. My only experience with operating air, air radios is, I flew C-130s for a dozen years and I was, a few interesting places on this earth, with the HF radios, I could just about talk to anybody, any place on the surface of the earth. And with the UHF, if I was at my house, I couldn't even call the city of Richmond because there's a hill in between. So, one vote for 800 megahertz radios and zero votes for UHF. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you. Alright, that brings us to Arkansas.
We have one more.
We have one more?
Norm and Woogie.
Norm Woogie, 3790 Pony Road. I wasn't gonna speak today, but after hearing some of the things that were said, I thought I might add a little bit to them. The industrial park financing, in, in two stages, that's what I wanted on the school district. The, the school district chose to have one bond and I asked, how come so many mistakes are made having two projects going on? One time I said, well, we have to spend that money in a certain time. We, we got to do it. But anyway, I didn't think that was too good of an excuse. The state of Kansas and Franklin County Commissioners way back when, I gotta, that's back when I had a memory, invited and encouraged people from neighboring states, Arkansas, Missouri, to come to Kansas. And they did that to encourage them to pay more benefits to these people. That's probably before some of you guys' time. And now, the school has to cope with this problem of these people with an attitude of being on the welfare system and everything, and it makes quite a challenge to the school. You know, I saw the statistics and it's the, the whole problem. And I have worked with the children and them as employees and also talked to their parents. And I said, how come they're not going to school? And how come they don't wanna finish school? How come they don't want higher education? Well, it was good enough for me. I says, but don't you want them to go to college? Well, I'm not gonna spend any money for their education. It's, it's, it's almost kinda humorous to me because it just goes on from generation to generation to generation. And my last point that I'd like to bring out is, it goes back to the school board. And I've got a boy that's a teacher and another that deals with children. And one of the most important things is to listen to the kids. That's the reason they're acting out. They said, we have zero tolerance, we don't have to put up with this. But these people, the principals and so forth, really need to listen to the kids. That's what they're crying. I wanna be listened to. And, and that's a skill and I just don't talk all the time, sometimes I listen to. But anyway, thank you, Janet, for being flexible. I wasn't going to talk. And thank you, guys.
Our consent agenda today, for consideration to be approved, we have meeting minutes from April 19th and tax change orders in the amount of a positive $1,166.56 is their motion to approve that consent agenda as stated.
Make a motion that we approve the consent agenda as stated.
Second.
Commissioner Howard?
Yes.
Commissioner Renault?
Yes.
Commissioner Oglesby?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Chair Waymire?
Yes. First item of business is to receive a report of the 2016 audit from Rodney Burns, Schlotterbeck and Burns LLC.
Good morning. First of all, it's not Schlotterbeck and Burns anymore. The Schlotterbeck retired last year, so it's just me now. So you'll notice the name on the report's a little different than it was. You should have a letter there that I gave out in connection with the audit. I'll review that first. The first item on there, the juvenile services department, in the past, they've kept spreadsheets of bills that they've sent out to other counties for housing juveniles, and then when the money came in and they tracked, this year they're all paid. We weren't able to get any records like that for 2016. The person that was doing those has retired, and I guess it got lost and somewhere in the mix. As, as an alternative procedure, we contacted the other counties that you get money from and confirmed how much they paid you and we traced it all in, so it's not, there's anything missing, but they need to keep records on that, as long as any other, as well as any other reimbursements they collect. And then what they do with the money each month, turning it into county treasure, they need to have records of that, so. And I talked to Derek, he's gonna talk to them about it and we're gonna get something set up. The other item on there, you have a credit card that all your department people use when they go on business trips and things. We look at those expenditures because there's been problems in other counties where it's being abused, people are buying personal items on it, that kinda thing. And we noticed that you're getting quite a volume of transactions on there now. A lot of them are normal month-to-month expenses, like phone bills, vehicle repairs, things like that. Things that I feel ought to be paid that's about your, is normal, through the normal course of expenditure approval. The problem you get is, the more volume of transactions you have in there, the easier it is for somebody to slip in an unauthorized transaction and nobody to catch it. Because if there's 40 or 50 bills attached, they're not gonna maybe notice one in the middle that's... And I, you know, we looked at the ones you had here, we didn't notice any problems, but it's just a caution to look at going forward, something to think about. As far as the audit itself goes, everything went real well. We do have one fund that's over budget, that's the solid waste fund. They were over budget $68,000. That was a combination of their, their holler, I guess, increased the fees for what they were charging, and there was an EPA issue they had to pay for. They had enough money to cover that, but the problem is, in 2017, you budgeted them to start the year with $127,000, they weren't starting with $74,000. So you may need to watch this fall, that they might be running short of cash, and they may have to have some money from the general to offset that. The other fund we had was over budget originally, it was the ambulance fund, but we adjusted their year-end transfer to get them back under budget. There's one fund that's in the red... uh, there's one fund that's in the red on the cash basis side of it, and that was the Idaho Bank, Idaho Road Bank Repair Project. But you spent money in anticipation of getting federal money back in this year. So that's not really a violation of the law, it's just something we have to report. Uh, we had one item. There were some payments made to the cornerstone detention products, total of about ninety-five thousand dollars. I think it was for some jail doors that were remodeled. Those were paid out of the Equipment Reserve Fund and they really can't be. That's not really equipment. That's more of a building expenditure. So we've moved out, showed those expenditures out of the general fund. The general fund had enough money to cover it. That wasn't an issue. I've got a contract with you to work on your budget this year. I assume we'll be starting that policy early in June. Do you have any questions about the tax lid or anything that I can help with while I'm here today that? One thing, one thing I'm recommending to, to Derek and them for next year, any expenses for departments that are outside the tax lid, like sheriff and jail, get those expenses in their budget, like employee benefits is the main, is the main thing there. Juvenile detention, you already have those in their budget, but sheriff and jail and dispatch, I don't believe they are. So budget those in their department for twenty eighteen, that'll get them outside the lid and they'll give you some room. If you're gonna try to have raised taxes, you have to have an election, you have to have your budget done by July first. But if you know you're not gonna have an election, you're not gonna try to have one, you can wait and do your budget by August twenty-fifth, which is the old deadline. So it's kind of up to you if you wanna. A lot of counties are saying there's no way they pass the election anyway, so they're just gonna go ahead and live with it the way it is for this year.
Economic development's outside the lid also, isn't it? Economic development is outside of the lid?
Uh, I don't believe so.
Bonding for.
The bonding.
Yeah, your PBC bonds are, yeah.
Okay.
Right. Now, do you have any, any business properties that were exempt from taxation that are going back on the roll next year? Okay, that'll be an adjustment to the lid, see if we can add on for that.
Yes, a significant one. Well, well, actually, it'll come on in two parts. It's American Eagle and it should come on a large majority of it next year and then the following year, the remainder of it.
So you're gonna adjust the lid for that. One thing that some counties have talked about, the state determines law enforcement expenses to be just patrolling and detention, which is the sheriff and jail basically. Uh, I heard some counties are trying to do a home rule resolution to include the county attorney and the court in that definition too. I don't know if that'll go anywhere or not. The department administration, their legal people say not to, to try to push that too hard because the legislature may take the exemption away if they feel it's being abused. So it's, you know, unless you really need the tax lid room, I would say just keep the sheriff and jail and don't try to push it with any others. Uh, there are a couple of bills pending that might affect that. I don't know if they're gonna go anywhere or not. One's House Bill twenty-three seventy-six. It requires a protest period. Rather than having an election to raise taxes, you publish your resolution, wait twenty-one days and then adopt the budget. The problem with that is if you still have to have an election, then you're getting too late to actually have the election by the time your budget's due. So that may not go anywhere.
By the time your tax statements are due.
Yeah, the tax statements are gonna be printed over on first. Uh, the other one was Senate Bill one sixty-seven, which was gonna abolish the tax lid completely, but it's been gutted and replaced with a bunch of appraisal changes that I don't think it's going anywhere either. But you might keep an eye on those when they come back in session here in the next week or two.
All right.
That's all I have for you as far as the audit goes, so if there are any questions, I'll be glad to answer.
I have a quick question and maybe it's for Janet more than, than Rodney. On those credit cards, I, I, we met with some representatives, remember when they came in? I don't remember everything exactly happened and there was something about some earning once back, is that still going on?
Yes, we're getting about two hundred dollars a month back on our credit card. So it's not a huge amount, but I mean, ev- every dollar is better than no doll- that we get's better than no dollars that we get. Um, but, um, per Rodney's audit, we're gonna be looking at, you know, some things that we do with the credit cards and, and possibly making some changes to, to our purchasing policy with the credit cards, so. And, um, just doing some more auditing of the credit card statements every month, just so we have a better internal procedure as far as the credit cards. We knew that all these things were taking place and some of them, the monthly expenses that Rodney were talking about, I discussed with Rodney and they just have to do with the timing issue of, you know, some of our like rural water bills and stuff that solid waste has and you know, just that the time that we get the bill and by the time it gets to over to be paid. So possibly having some conversations with them as to how we could make payments on that through our voucher system versus the credit card system, but the credit card was used because of that. So, and because of the ease, then they just added a few more and which was okay, the bills are getting paid, but, um, per Rodney's request, he'd like to see that move back to the voucher system. So we're gonna be working on that.
I would, I would think local vendors would be willing to take a, a check a few days later rather than pay the credit card penalty or the fee they gotta pay for the credit cards, but maybe can't do that. I know with most people that are distant, but maybe some.
And the, the law does allow that if you have a bill that you have to pay ahead of the next bill payment cycle to take advantage of a discount or avoid a penalty, you can write that check early and then the commission can prove it at their next meeting. So there is a provision for that in the law. Uh, she mentioned the discount or the, the cash back bonus you're getting. We see some credit cards that have discount programs that build up, like if you stay at Hilton Hotel so many times, you get points. We've seen people take those points and use for their own personal use as a vacation. You know, I don't think that's a good idea. I don't know that's going on here, but that's in other places. It's something to keep an eye on, but.
All right. Is there anything to vote to receive or just informative, isn't it? I mean, I'm, no, all right.
Okay. Thank you.
Thanks.
Oh, I do have a contract for next year, if you wanna talk about that while I'm here.
Sure.
Yeah, I, I will tell you, I'm very happy. This is my first year working closely with Rodney. Um, but I think Janet and I work very well with him, um, very comfortable with him. And so certainly, I am in support and favor of executing a contract for next year as well.
All right. You concur?
Absolutely. We've, um, the concern from the commission has previously been that, you know, Rodney's done it for a number of years, but there's ver- there's not that many auditors out there that, that can get to us in a timely fashion and that, you know, have the experience with, you know, counties of our size and, and Rodney does an excellent job. You know, even though he comes here every year, it's not like we have, uh, he's close enough for any of us to have a close relationship with him. So I don't feel that that's a concern and that's always, you know, what the commission's concerned as far as continuing on with the same firm has been. So Rodney always does a nice job and always comes in and quickly gets our audit done and we really appreciate that.
Good deal institutional knowledge, which is.
Absolutely.
I'm good, I'm good with it too.
So there's interest, I guess, uh, have Derek review the contract and put it back on another agenda for us.
Okay, I'll leave them with him.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks. Next item of business is consider approving a resolution installing a stop sign. Jim Hager, Public Works Director, will fill us in on the details.
Good morning, Commissioner. Allen County has installed a stop sign for northbound Eisenhower Road at Allen Road. The MUTCD, the Manual and Uniform Traffic Control Devices, allows the placement of stop sign where the application of the normal right-of-way rule right has the right-of-way is unduly hazardous. The other thing affecting this is that while Allen County did the one for northbound traffic, this being Franklin County, we did not install one for southbound traffic. Usually they're installed in pairs unless it's a T-intersection. The request is a motion to approve Resolution seventeen dash twenty-two installing a stop sign for southbound Eisenhower Road at Allen Road.
Questions for Jim?
Uh, this, what I've been talking to Jim and Derek about, um, it's in my district and I had some calls from a couple of people in that area that was requesting this. They have had a couple, uh, major wrecks at that intersection, so that's kinda, I brought up to Jim and he went down and checked it out and everything, so. I would make a motion to approve the resolution installing a stop sign at, uh, southbound Eisenhower and Allen Road.
You have a second?
Second.
Commissioner Renault?
Yes.
Commissioner Oglesby?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Howard?
Yes.
Chair Waymire?
Yes.
Our third item of business is also with Jim.
For years, KDOT has contracted with the Noxious Weed Department to spray the various highway right-of-ways under their control. KDOT desires to contract with us again. Their request is a motion authorizing Chairman execute the KDOT contract agreement to treat noxious weeds.
Any changes in the terms?
Not this year. Last year, we increased the hourly rates to include the benefits. I assume since there's no change, it'll be agreeable with KDOT.
Questions for Jim?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve the, uh, contract with KDOT for Noxious Weed Spring.
Commissioner Oglesby?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Howard?
Yes.
Commissioner Renault?
Yes.
Chair Waymire?
Yes.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you, Jim. That brings us to staff, staff reports.
Yeah, last week Janet and I and Joy finished up our individual budget meetings with department heads. So far, I think things are going pretty well. In the upcoming weeks and months, those will all be coming before you all and we'll sit down with department heads and work through those. But I'm happy with the progress that we've made. Really, every department head seems to understand where we're at and is willing to do what they can to, uh, you know, keep us under that tax lid and, and we all understand what we have and an industrial park coming up and a radio system coming up. So, um, I will continue to keep you apprised of where we're at on that. At Monday's study session, um, and three of you were at the recent joint meeting with the school board, uh, and the city, we will be discussing names for the industrial parks. So, uh, have that on your radar, but that will be Monday. And beyond that, I don't have anything else today, so.
All right. Jim, Janet?
Good morning, I'll be attending reconstruction conference for the Idaho Road Bank Repair. It'll be Eldon Garnett. I'm gonna take probably at least one staff member with me.
Nothing? Commissioners comments, board reports.
I haven't been to anything since the last meeting.
All right.
Nope. Uh, several's went to the update from, uh, economic development, uh, yesterday morning at Neosso County and got an update on the development park and so about it. Derek, I don't know if you wanna give any more?
Yeah, that was just a general update on where we're at with the, the project and the city's, you know, obviously had a bond issue and I don't wanna speak for the city, but they're in good position to start on the utilities and, and we all know where we're at on the roads. We're in the process of acquiring right-of-way and there's a water line we're gonna have to move. But we hope to stay largely on schedule and sometime this summer they can start issuing for the roads, so.
There's nothing else, ask for a motion to adjourn.
So move.
First, you were second. Pretty good with that? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, we adjourned.